Okay. All right, we'll get started now. If anybody else comes in, not a big deal.
So we're going to run through the presentation, hold questions, and do those at the end?
Yeah.
For time's sake.
We'll do that. And I know that a lot of you have already been to some of the ones I've done before. And the way I always run these is I do a little slideshow presentation to sort of get some detail out there of the budget, what it was proposed to be, what it ended up. And after I go through all that, then I'll just open it up and you guys can make comments or ask questions. If we don't know the answers to questions, if we can just take your contact information, Amen or Drew sitting back there will take that and we'll find the answer and then we'll send it to you. And like I said, I usually only do eight or 10 slides, but education is such a big issue in the state right now that I did probably 15 or 20 additional slides strictly on education. So here we go. And I start with the financial plan just to talk about one thing that lots of people complain about who are either heads of municipalities or school districts or whatever. The governor, you know, has the tax cap and wants everybody to stay under 2%. And these are just different ways of looking at things. The general fund is revenue that the state collects that they can spend for anything. Okay? State operating funds includes the general fund, and then it includes also some dedicated revenue we get from specific fees, things like that, and it can only be spent on very specific items. That is the one that we really have to focus on. The state funds, which is just below, includes all the state operating funds plus capital. But the governor wants everybody to stay in that 2% cap in operating funds. So as you notice down there, we only went up 1.7%. So we did stay under the 2% cap. All these other things, all funds, they include federal funds that pass through the state and are spent on different things. That's why the number's big. And over the years, especially in the last six or seven years, the amount of money coming from the federal government has increased quite a bit. And that's why you'll see, you know, the budget seems like it's increased dramatically if you look back all the way to 2006 or 2007. But once the recession hit and the private sector sort of hit the skids and there were people going to be laid off all over the place, the federal government did step in and increase spending, tried to keep 100,000 teachers in the state employed, police, firemen, things like that. They didn't want all those people being laid off, so they sent us money for that. All funds adjusted, that last line includes not only all the funds, but there are some special funds. We've gotten an extra, I think, $1.5 billion in Medicaid from the federal government because for, through the Affordable Care Act, all those people, new people who came in under the Affordable Care Act, the federal government paid 100% of that instead of the 50% that they used to pay. The other thing is there was over $5 billion for Superstorm Sandy rebuilding because the president and the federal government, I think New York State got about $38 or $40 billion. It's going to be over a period of years that we'll get that to rebuild after the storm. Education funding. Let me see, wasn't there a slide? No. The education funding, and this just shows what the original budget was from the governor. And he had said, okay, all I'm obliged to do is increase education funding 1.7%, or $377 million. And that's a thing called expense-based aid, which means it's money that was already spent on things that they're allowed to spend it on, but the state was going to go ahead and pay for those things. But if you do all these education reforms that I want, says I'll give you a 4.8% increase, which was $1.1 billion. So there was a big difference in there, and there was a big battle that went on all through the last month or so of the budget. What actually happened after all the negotiations and us telling him, no, 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 we ended up with a much larger increase because we got $1.3 billion in formula-based aid. And that's not everything we got, but that's formula-based, and that's the foundation aid that really favors the school districts that need it the most. The poor urban school districts, the small rural school districts that don't have much of a base also that they can tax. What I show is 428 in foundation aid increase, and I think that helped a lot of the poorer schools. The big thing was $603 million to cover a lot of the gap elimination adjustment. And everybody talked about, let's get rid of the gap elimination, which was instituted back in, I don't know, 2009, I think. And what that was is back then at the depths of the financial crisis, Governor Patterson said, you know, everybody's taking cuts. Now the school districts are going to have to contribute to get us through this financial crisis. So after all the formulas ran and said how much we're going to give each school, and the bottom line, they took an amount away from each school district, and that's the gap elimination adjustment. And it has cost lots of school districts lots of money. But we did about 60% we got rid of this year. And there's, I think, $411 million left statewide, and we've said that we are going to get rid of that remaining $400 million in the next school, or next year. So, let's see. And this just shows how the gap elimination has run its course year after year. Until now, it's down to $433 or $34 million. We did get some money back in that first year, 2010, '11, from the federal government. The American Recovery Act provided us with $734 million, and I believe that was from race-to-the-top money. We had agreed to do some things that the federal government wanted us to do to improve education, and they gave us some additional funding. This just graphically shows you how much we've eaten away at the gap elimination. This just says that at a minimum, every school district got at least 30% taken away, and some of them up to 98% of their gap elimination adjustment. And it's a whole bunch of different formulas. It looks into enrollment growth, free reduced-price lunch, eligible pupil, or, yeah, pupil, and the growth in some schools of English language learners. And that's something that seems to be increasing and costs a little bit more money. The foundation aid increase, the biggest one was 15%, the smallest was .37%. There are school districts down in Westchester County and Nassau County and places down on the outskirts of New York City that have very rich tax base. They don't get much money from the state. They might get 5% of their whole school budget comes from the state, while a school like Tully, I'm not sure, but I think it gets anywhere from 75 to 80-something percent of their budget comes from the state. So you can see there's a big difference. There was some other education funding money that we got. And one of the big fights that we had with the governor was, he had identified 27 schools within New York State that he called persistently failing schools, which means for 10 years or more, they've not been doing very well. And he wanted to take those over with a receivership and have the state be in control of that. And we said, you know, don't do that. Give us a year. We'll set some metrics to see if we can improve these schools. But what you've got to do for us is give us some money to create what's called community-based schools. These are schools that not only teach what's supposed to be taught in school, but it surrounds the students with a whole bunch of services that will address a lot of their needs because a lot of them come to school hungry, they don't have the right clothes, they have emotional problems, they have behavioral problems. There's a whole host of things. And he wanted to provide, for those 27 school districts, he wanted to provide $8 million to help them. We said, well, that's very nice, but that's probably not going to do it. And in the end, we got him to agree to $75 million. There are also another 128 or 40 school districts that have been what he called failing for three years. And we're also, we got two years to go ahead and try to improve those schools. And the improvement we're looking at is not just they're all going to get great test scores, but other metrics like attendance. You know, there's high, you know, truancy in schools in all those districts. And there were, there's probably about six or seven other things that they're going to measure. Test scores is one of them, but it's not the only one. We also got some money for teacher centers. Those are places where teachers go to develop new skills, they learn about new technologies, they try different programs that nationally people say are good for specific things, and they try to pick the ones that they know will work in their classrooms. State Education Department, you know, we, instead of letting the governor decide what the teacher evaluation system was going to be, we got him to agree to let state education and the regents decide what the new teacher evaluation system is going to be. And we also said, listen, we'll give you $1 million to go ahead and hire some experts who have put some of these systems together, ones that have proven to work. And the other problem about state education, it's been woefully underfunded for a number of years now. Even though we've appropriated the money and budgets, for some reason, the governor hasn't been releasing that money, so they're short lots of people over there. And if now all of a sudden we're telling them that they've got to go ahead and review 692 school districts' new teacher evaluation systems, they've said, you know, we just don't have the manpower to do it. So we not only gave them $1 million for this, but as of today, we passed a bill saying that we were going to give them $8 million in addition to hire more people in order to get through all of those new teacher evaluation systems. State Education Department, up until a little while ago, there was only one architect left in state education to review all 692 school districts' requests to do facilities, you know, either building schools, fixing schools, doing whatever. So they would, their requests would languish for six months, a year, more than that, before they got approved. So we gave them some money so they could hire some more people. Bilingual education grants, we gave them another $1 million for that. There are some other things. Master-teacher programs. It's not easy to become a master teacher. You have to pass a whole bunch of different rigorous tests and do other things, but we gave them $2.5 million for the master-teacher program. Masters in Education Scholarship Program. If you're a teacher and you, and I've got descriptions of all these after the, but basically, if you're a teacher, you attain a certain grade point average and you do some other stuff, they will actually pay for you to go get your masters. PTAC is the combination of the State Education Department and a corporation. The best-known one is down in Brooklyn or the Bronx, and that's between the New York City School District and IBM. And what it is, is they go into high school and they learn very specific skills that the business that is providing funds for this program wants. And when those kids graduate, they have jobs waiting for them. So it's a direct pipeline. And there's some of these other things. The pre-K for three- and four-year-olds. A year ago, we did full-day universal pre-K. New York City got $300 million for that because they said they were ready. They had the kids, they had the facilities, they wanted to do this, and it was going to make a big difference. And they gave up, we got property tax relief for the upstate part of the state. They said, okay, we don't want any of that. Give us the money for the universal pre-K. So they got $300 million. We got $40 million upstate. The big problem we had that New York City didn't have, because they had more money, is we made our school districts go ahead and pay for it first and then get reimbursed. And sometimes that would take two years before they got the money. Well, all the school districts were in such bad financial shape that none of them around here could do that. So we fought to have that changed, and we did succeed. Now they will pay upfront for the full-day universal pre-K. And in addition to the $40 million, we got another $40 million. So we've got $80 million this year that we can spend statewide on that program. And Quality Stars is a program that just rates how good these early education and childcare services are. So this is from, you know, one-year-old to three-year-olds. They have daycare programs and stuff. And the thing that the state is trying to do, instead of just having babysitter services, have programs that provide high-quality early education, so that's stimulating the kids. And, you know, really, in a lot of the urban areas is where it's most desperately needed because they don't have parents that are reading to them at night and going through things and have the certain toys that stimulate their activity and all that. So we got $1.5 million, and any parent will be able to go on the Quality Stars website to look at the ratings for all the different childcare programs available. This is their Masters in Education, like I said. Teaching and, there's $20 million for Teacher Excellence Fund. And these teachers, and I don't know that you'll see that around here, except maybe in the Syracuse City School District, because what they're really trying to do here is incentivize teachers, highly effective teachers, to teach in struggling school districts. And it's not easy sometimes to find really good teachers who want to go and teach in those districts. That's pretty tough. Another original proposal by the governor is that if a teacher is rated ineffective in either portion of the score, and what we're talking about is the new rating system, there is a grid. And on the x-axis is teacher evaluation, on the y-axis is student performance on statewide tests and other tests that they might take. And there's a thing called HEIDI. You're either highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective. And if you are ineffective in either axis, according to the governor, you can't be rated effective, even if you're highly effective in the other one. So that was one thing. And the other thing, he wanted to change tenure to, from three years to five years. And on top of five years, he wanted you to be rated effective or highly effective in all five of those years in order to get teacher tenure. We thought that was a little tough. I mean, most people, when they first get out of school and go on to their first job, they're not as effective as they are five years later or 10 years later after they've gotten some experience. So what we did, we said, listen, we'll compromise. It'll be four years to get teacher tenure, and it requires that three out of the four years, you're either effective or highly effective. The only caveat is if you're ineffective in the fourth year, you can't get tenure, but you will get a bonus year to go ahead on probation in order to get another effective or highly effective. And the school districts have the authority to terminate a probationary teacher, which is, they already have that authority. Not many people realize that. He wanted to have, and this is still a big issue that's going on right now, he wanted an education tax credit that would allow people, individuals, corporations to donate money to the schools of their choice, private or public or foundations. And that was his way of saying, you know, we're going to get some help from the outside in order to fund schools. The problem is, he said, okay, you can donate up to $1 million, and you'll get dollar-for-dollar tax credit, I don't know, 75 or 80% of that. So if a hedge fund manager from New York City who has $450 million in the bank decides he wants to donate $1 million to his favorite school in New York City, which is probably a private school, because most hedge fund managers send their kids to private school, that that's okay. We had kind of a problem with that because, first of all, that would take money out of the general fund. And we're already kind of scratching around all the time to make sure we have enough money for schools, public schools, which is the first priority of the state government. I mean, we give private schools some money to cover textbooks, and we give them, you know, transportation, which a lot of other states don't provide for private schools, and we give them some additional money for some things that we require them to do. But they decided that they wanted more than that. Let's see. We don't need that. And I just want to let you know that that education investment tax credit dropped out of the budget. We didn't do anything with it. And it's come back up again because the governor's been barnstorming across the state, trying to get people interested in it again so that we would pass some form of it before the end of session this year. It's changed. It seems to change almost every day because he's trying to get, you know, as people tell them reasons why they don't like it, okay, we'll change it. And he keeps changing it. But I think the bottom line is, people in the assembly anyway are uncomfortable with it because there's not really a lot of means testing. You don't know if it's all going to go to the most needy kids. Certainly don't know if it's going to go to the most needy schools. And, you know, I've had arguments that say, if you want to give taxpayer dollars to private schools, then we need to have them form a board of education that we can vote on, to have a budget that we can vote on, and to find out what they're going to spend it on. A private school doesn't have to tell you anything right now like that. So that's a, continues to be a discussion that's ongoing. Teacher certifications. One of the things, you know, he's really trying to raise the profession of teaching up close to something that's like, somebody wants to become a lawyer or a doctor or any other profession like that. So he said that now we're going to require teachers, every five years, to have 100 hours of continuing education. The standard before was 175 hours of professional development, but it wasn't the same stuff that's going to be required by the State Education Department. So it's going to be different, it's going to be a little bit more rigorous. Schools that have the money can go ahead and get the additional 75 hours if they want, but everybody, every five years is going to have to have 100 hours of this State Education Department certified training. So SED is going to establish these rigorous standards. Teacher evaluations. The governor, you know, the governor said, listen, so we did the new teacher evaluations, and 97% of the teachers were either effective or highly effective. But, you know, 50-something percent of the kids graduated. He said, that can't possibly be. You know, something's wrong. So he wanted to have different measurements to measure how effective teachers are. And he suggested using the state tests from third grade through eighth grade and have them count as 50% of a teacher's evaluation. Of course, we said, well, geez, you know, that doesn't take into account a lot of things because kids at Fayetteville-Manlius and Jamesville-Dewitt and even down here in Tully are a lot different than the kids that go to the Syracuse School District. And, you know, so we, we sort of pushed back against a lot of this stuff. He also wanted 50% of the score to be determined by rigorous observations, of which 35 points out of those 50 points were going to be by outside observation, not by your principal in your school or any other teachers, but you're going to have to bring somebody in from the outside. And only 15 points were going to be from the supervisor, your principal. We have, you know, we talked him out of a lot of that stuff, but there's the scoring matrix that we got him to agree to. Here's the infamous scoring matrix. And as you see, the student performance along the top, you know, I is ineffective, D is developing, E is effective, H is highly effective. And then the teacher observation, H-E-D-I. And it shows if you get those two things, highly effective and ineffective, you're developing, you're D. If you get highly effective and developing, you get an E for effective. And if you're highly effective and effective, you're highly effective. The same if you're highly effective and highly effective. So, you know, what the categories are going to be that they're going to rate them on have yet to be determined. That's the, regents and the State Education Department are going to determine all that. So we have no idea yet how much, what percentage the state tests are going to, you know, take up. And there are going to be additional things that can be used to rate the student's performance also. There could be, you know, local tests, but they have to be approved by State Ed. There could be things like portfolio or performance. They do have to be run by State Ed, and State Ed has to say, yeah, that's a good judgment and everything. But we don't know what it's going to be yet. So there's a lot of hyperventilating that's been going on, and everybody thinks that it's going to be 50% of the tests, and they're not happy about that. But we haven't gotten there yet. And like I said, today, we took a vote, we passed a bill in the assembly, and it says that instead of by the end of June, and this is what the budget said because the governor was in a hurry, by the end of June, we have to have the regents and State Ed determine what the new teacher evaluation system is. And by November 15, all 692 school districts have to have sent in their teacher evaluation proposals to State Ed. They all have to be reviewed and approved. He said, you know, they've already... He said, you know, they've already done that kind of with Common Core, why don't we slow things down? And that's what we've done according to this bill, and we got to get the Senate to pass it. But it says that we're going to give until November 15 of this year for State Ed and the Regents to determine what the evaluation system is going to be. And then we give them one more year till November 15 of 2016 before all 692 school districts have to have their systems approved by State Ed. So we're just telling everybody to slow down, let's just get this right, you know, we're not in a hurry. This just talks about the student performance axis, and, you know, it's based on state growth scores, tested in subjects that are tested. And that's the other problem. You have, you know, math, the state math test, you have this state English language test, but you really don't have a music test, you don't have a phys ed test. There's a lot of subjects you don't have tests in, and they want to know how we're going to evaluate those teachers. So that's still another thing that they've got to determine. And observations will be conducted by the traditional supervisor administrator, and there's going to be a portion that either an independent evaluator or a peer evaluator. And a peer evaluator might be a master teacher or someone else in the building who's been around and knows a lot about teaching. They can go ahead and, and do the review and the scoring. What we tried to do, more than anything, was try to maintain more local control. The school boards, the superintendents and the principals, we tried to make sure that they still had a major part in evaluating their teachers. Because, you know, every school district is different, every student body is different. Only the people who are there every day really know, you know, what's going on and how to evaluate somebody. There can be, outside evaluators come in, and instead of counting as, you know, 35 points for 50% of it, maybe they count five. It's always good to have some outside eyes come and look at what's going on, and they'll come up with things that maybe the people who are there on a day-to-day basis just don't think of because they're so focused on some issues that the school, the specific school has. Okay, we just went over that. They're going to do that. This is just as whether or not to use the second student performance option and which And another thing, the governor wanted to sort of take away a lot of collectively bargained things from the school districts. All of the 27 persistently failing school districts, he wanted a receiver in there which could just cancel all the contracts that had been collectively bargained and just sort of do what the receiver wants to do. We didn't think that was a great idea because you lose a lot of buy-in from the teachers, you know, because then they have no protections at all. And nobody wants to be a teacher whose whole life depends on how some kids do, whether they're good students or bad students, where they don't have really complete control over that. So we got him to say that no matter what happens, even for those 10, or those 27 schools that have been failing for 10 years, we said that the existing school board and that superintendent, if they decide they're going to have a receiver come in, they're going to be the ones that will pick the receiver. So he wanted to say it can be an individual, it can be a charter school, it can be a different school district that would come in and run it, but somebody from State Ed was going to decide who was going to come in. And we said, we don't think that's a good idea. We think we should let the community decide who the receiver's going to be if it really comes down to that. Oh, and also, as far as these ineffective ratings, one of the things that the governor complained about, and he's probably right about this, there are some kids who have gone through school districts for 10 or 12 years, and they've been bad school districts. They've been subjected to not-so-great teachers, and it's year after year. It's generation of students keep going through these schools, and why are we doing this? You know, we're failing the students. So he said, you know, if you're an ineffective teacher, he sort of wanted to tell you, you're an ineffective teacher, and maybe you should try something else as a career and not be a teacher. So anyway, if you have two consecutive ineffective evaluations, you, the school district could start the procedure of letting you go. Unless you can rebut what they're saying by clear and convincing evidence that the employee is not incompetent considering all surrounding circumstances. So we, again, wanted to have the teacher at least have a chance to say, no, they're wrong. These are the reasons why it's ended up like this. However, if you have three consecutive ineffective ratings, you can only rebut that by showing there's fraud. So you can only say, you know, the principal or superintendent hates me. He said, you know, they said they hated me, and they're going to get rid of me, and I've got all these people who can, who've heard them say that, and that's why they're doing this. Other than that, they have to start the procedure of letting that teacher go. And like I said, there's persistently failing schools. There's rigorous performance metrics and goals that they're going to have to meet in order to get out of the persistently failing category. We're going to continue to provide for a number of years, these wraparound services to create community schools because we've got evidence now, and we've done it even in the Syracuse School District for about a year and a half now. We found that, you know, you don't have to just give the money to the school. The county already provides a lot of services like that, so let them provide those services directly in the school. So you have social workers and psychologists and, you know, dentists and doctors and all sorts of people who actually will go in the schools and make sure those kids are ready to learn. Like I said, the superintendent and the parents, we tried to give them some authority, and they'll be given all the powers that would be made available to a receiver for this period in which we're going to see if we can pull them out of it. And they get a period of two years for those that have just been failing for three years. If, you know, at the end of these periods, they can either be removed from the list, allowed to continue under district leadership, or they can be placed into receivership. This is the bill that was passed today. Again, like I said, it's just delaying everything. It decouples the teacher evaluation approval system from State Ed. The governor at the last minute, the day before we passed the budget, said that this teacher evaluation system, if a school district doesn't have their teacher evaluation system approved by November of 2015, they're going to lose the increase in school aid that they've been given, you know, on their school runs. We didn't really think that was a very good idea either. It mandates that SED release a significant amount of the test question. Another big complaint about these state tests was that these kids take these tests, the teachers have to sign, you know, documents that they're not going to talk about the test or say anything, you know, anything about the questions. They don't really get the test back. They can't see which students missed what questions. All they can see is a score, and they get like one, an A, and it's either, you know, they got it right or they got it wrong, but they don't know what it is. And the complaint is, well, this isn't helping the kids or the teacher because, A, they get the test results back after the kid's already graduated from that class, you know, that year, they moved on to the next year. And B, the teachers can't see where it is. They need to focus and change their curriculum to get the, you know, the kids better in those areas. So we said, you know, you're going to have to release these questions. And the reason they're doing all this, they think that everybody's going to be cheating, trying to get, you know, their kids to have better scores so that the teachers all will get more money. And, you know, I think that happened in one school in Georgia four years ago, and since then, you know, everybody's afraid that's going to happen. Independent observers become mandatory in the evaluation system and includes other locally selected measures of student achievement. Ethics reform. Now we're finished finally with education. Now we'll go into our stuff, ethics reform. The new budget requires public officials to disclose outside income they receive from non-governmental employment. And this really focused more on lawyers that are in the legislature. We've got some other people. We've got a guy whose family owns a pharmacy, he's a pharmacist. We used to have a dentist in there too and stuff. But that's not generally where you find problems. The problems are if a lawyer is in office, and if he ascends to a certain position where he controls a lot of power, he can make decisions independently. Who knows? I mean, he can be of counsel to a law firm, and if somebody comes to them, he can have an agreement with them. If anybody comes for certain things, I get a piece of that action. And, and you've all read about all of that stuff. But we just turned in last week our financial disclosure forms, and everybody, if you have a certain amount of money, if you're a lawyer, a certain amount of money that you've earned from a client, you have to disclose that client. There are some caveats in there. If it's detrimental to the client, you can report it, and it's not going to be released. But the Ethics J-COPE, which is the ethics group that investigates everything, they get to see it all, and they can see if there's a conflict of interest or whatever. These are just the rules. You know, if you earn more than $10,000 per year, you have to disclose the names of clients or customers from whom they receive more than $5,000 each. They're required to describe the types of services provided. The big cases that are out there now, both with Speaker Silver and Majority Leader Skelos is that they didn't do anything for the money that they got paid. Okay. Sources of income covered by this requirement include law practices, real estate brokers, professionally licensed by the Department of Education. Everybody who has a license in the state is licensed by the Department of Education, no matter what you do. So that's a lot of different occupations. All public officials in the state or municipal retirement, convicted of public corruption, may be required to forfeit their pensions. A portion of forfeited pension may be set aside by the court for their innocent spouse or children. There is, you know, we passed something already in the budget, but it requires a constitutional amendment because currently, a pension is considered a contract, according to the Constitution, which cannot be diminished. So they say you, you agreed to work for this amount of money and for this pension. And of course, in the early days, people worked for the pension, the pay wasn't very good. It's got a little better now, but you've made an agreement, and they can't diminish that. That's what they say. But we will pass this, we'll pass it in the second, in next year's session, and then in the 2016 election, they'll be on the ballot referendum, and you'll get to vote on it whether or not you want this to, to happen, that people will lose their pension. The one thing that's happening right now, in the Assembly, we have to still pass a bill that describes some stuff because the bill that was originally passed in the budget included all state employees. Didn't matter if you were an elected official or you were a janitor. And all the unions went crazy, and all the employees went crazy, and they're wondering, well, why am I going to lose my pension? You know, I, I can't affect anything. So we're changing that right now, and hopefully before the end of session, both the Assembly and the Senate will pass that. There was another issue where one of the members was charging for per diems, and he wasn't coming to Albany. There's new transparency regarding per diems, there's electronic verification system now. I don't have to use that because I use EZ Pass, and I get a report that says I got off of exit 23 in Albany on this, at this time on this day, and I use that to show verification. But if you don't, if you take the train up, if you ride with somebody else or whatever they said they did, you have to go inside the Legislative Office Building near the payroll department, and you have to swipe your card, and that makes a record. Related to travel is online. The budget strengthens the ban on using campaign funds for personal use. Also going to, I guess, forbid the use of campaign funds for legal defense, which is what the big guys who had, you know, $3 million each in their campaign accounts, that's how they're fighting their corruption cases.
Would you, would you go back to that online? What does that mean? That'll be available to anybody that hits that website? We can see that?
Related to travel and per diem expenses be made available online. Yeah, I mean, they're going to put everything up there for everybody to see. I mean, currently now, they have everybody's amount of per diems and travel-related expenses are on websites, and they rate, you know, they rank everybody from 1 to 150 who has the most, who has the least, which is not a really good ranking because some people live in Niagara Falls and they have to drive to Albany, and some people, you know, live in the Hudson Valley and have to drive to Albany. It's kind of different. But the per diems are things that can be pretty similar because you're allowed, I think, $172 a day when you're, when you come to Albany, you're overnight. So that includes your hotel room, all your meals, and any local travel that you have. You get $172 a day for that. If you're there for a partial day, you're not staying overnight, you get $61. And the complaint that the individual who just got convicted of doing that, you know, he, he had financial problems, he'd been upset because it's been 16 years since any of the legislators got a raise, and, you know, he said that was a problem. So, let's see. Let's go to a nicer subject like higher education. This just, graph just shows the variation of what the state has spent on higher education over the last, you know, 25 years or so. And it shows there are periods of time when we don't do the best for the SUNY system or CUNY system down in the city. But what it does show is it's been pretty stable since 2011. And we've had- We've had a slight increase this year, I think of about $7.5 million. What we did this year also is we increased the reimbursement rate to community colleges per full-time equivalent student by $100. So now they get $2,597 per student for state reimbursement. We also made a 20% increase in the opportunity programs, and those programs are for kids, you know, who are from lower income or middle-income families, and it's, you know, TAP, there's the Higher Education Opportunity Program, HEOP, there's EOP, the Education Opportunity Program, there's SEEK, there's C-Step, there's the Liberty Program, there's a whole bunch of different programs that are all for different specific things, but we increased the funding by a total of 20%. And we provided $605 million in capital funding for SUNY. That might sound like a lot, but there are, you know, 62 SUNY campuses. They all have lots of buildings. Some of the buildings are very old, so maintenance, you know, is pretty expensive. And included in there are the hospitals, like Upstate and Downstate and the one on Long Island. You know, they're looking for, the hospitals themselves want $400 million each because some of the hospital buildings are old, and because the state has decreased the amount of funding it provides for those hospitals from 20%, I don't know, seven years ago, it's like 7% now. So they've decreased the funding to them, and the only way that the hospitals and the health centers can continue is if they sort of grow out of it. So they need capital to build new buildings, provide new services so they can bill more. And, you know, SUNY Upstate has been doing that over the last few years. They've opened, you know, the Children's Hospital, the Cancer Center, I think there's another operating room. I mean, they're all really trying to grow in order to be able to generate enough revenue to keep everything going. So the total amount is $987 million for SUNY, and that, like I said, it's an increase of $7.5 million. There's a new thing the governor put in. It's called the PIP or the Performance Improvement Plan. And he's got certain goals, including improving access, so allowing more students to get in, and completion, requiring a higher percentage of the kids to actually make it through and graduate. It also requires experiential learning, which in Anadaga County might not be too hard because we do have lots of businesses that these students can do internships in, but you get up in the North Country, that might be a little tougher because there's not as many businesses, and they'd have to travel long distances. But he's, we're going to figure that out, I guess. And you're going to create a master research program, and they're going to provide financial incentives for presidents tied to the Startup New York program. So the Startup New York program was if you have unused land or unused buildings on these state universities, they can have a business come in and take over. They either can build a new building there, or they can refurbish an existing empty building for use, and they get the 10 years of no state income tax, no property tax, and that's a Startup New York program. And the only, you know, there's many requirements. It has to have some kind of tie to the mission of the college or university. It's supposed to have some kind of direct tie. And the whole purpose of it is people are tired of us educating so many people and then them moving away after they get their education. And this was going to be more of a direct pipeline because if you have kids doing internships in these businesses, it's been proven that, I don't know what the percentage is, 63% or 65% of those kids will stay and work and get jobs at those companies. So that was the, the whole purpose of that. If they don't complete a performance improvement plan and it's not approved, 10% of their state funding is supposed to be withheld. So I'm very sure that they'll focus on their performance improvement plans and get them done. This is for municipalities. It's called the CHIPS Program or Consolidated Highway Improvement Program. It's been, you know, finally in 2013, they started to increase it again. It had been flat for a number of years. In last year, 2014, 15, we gave an extra $40 million statewide because of the harsh winter. Well, we had at least as harsh, if not a harsher, winter this winter, so we provided $50 million, I think it was, additional this year. Yeah, it's $50 million for extreme weather, and this can be used not only for roads, but a lot of water mains and stuff popped, and they needed to be replaced too. So you can use it for water infrastructure also. Transportation, this is the central system, our regional transportation authority. You've probably read a lot about how they were going to end evening, buses, weekends, holidays, is just going to stop unless they got $25 million more dollars. And we fought and fought and fought. We got them to $25 million, basically. But the reason they're having such a hard time, they're being funded by real estate, what's it called?
Mortgage.
Mortgage recording tax. And during the recession, of course, the mortgage recording tax fell off the table because so many people were losing their homes, nobody was buying homes, credit was so tight, and they just lost so much funding in that area. It's come back a little bit, but not nearly enough, and we're working on devising a new formula that will provide them with adequate funding going forward so we don't have to every year go through this fire drill of getting them the extra money they need. This is just a very, I don't want to say complicated, but I'm sure you won't understand it, except for the fact that if you look down at central New York, and those are the four years of the Regional Economic Development Councils. And what it, all it really says is that if you add up all four years, we are the region that came in first place. We got the most money for the projects that we, we got approved. So they've done a good job there. Again, things that fell off the table when we were doing the budget right at the end, the property tax reimbursement called the circuit breaker, which would determine, which would say that your income also determines what you pay in property taxes. So if you paid more than 6% of your income in property taxes, that overage, you would get a refund from the state government of, I don't know, 50, between 50 and 75% of that overage, you'd get it back. And that was going to be, I think, $1.7 billion altogether. That fell off the table. The education investment tax credit that I talked about before fell off the table. Charter school reimbursement increase, they wanted a per head increase for kids going to charter schools of anywhere from $350 to $500, and they wanted to remove the cap. In 2010, when we approved an increase in charter schools, we said, we're going to increase 100 or so in New York City and 100 in the rest of the state, and it was divided. New York City has used 90 of them probably, or 92, and we've used, I don't know, 30 in the rest of the state, maybe 50, I don't know. But they said they wanted to remove the cap and do as many as you want, and they didn't want to have it based on regions. They could use the other ones left over from the Upstate. That didn't make it. An extension of New York City mayor control didn't make it, but we're voting on that now. We just passed our bill yesterday.